Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 27th meeting of the Planning Committee of Buckinghamshire Council. We've got quite a full agenda tonight. We're going confidential at the end of it, so we're going to get through as fast as we can there in my. It's already eight fifteen. But before we start that, we have a public session and we have Robert Webb and Jenny Harris here tonight want to speak about the Bent Hill planning application, which is on the agenda. So you have fifteen minutes between you, so where would I like to start? Please, if you could just stand up and perhaps come up a bit this way so you can be seen on the... That's absolutely fine there.
No, we won't take fifteen minutes, don't worry. Thank you for letting us speak this evening. My name is Jenny Harris and I'm the agent for planning application twenty-two seventeen one eighty-eight. For pre-dwelling set by Hill, London Road, Buckingham. The site sits in between the buildings of Bent Hill Farm and the edge of the Lysinapadwick Community Centre and is within the settlement boundary. The accessible side is an existing track, created from London Road, which runs parallel to Wilson and Mary, the Lake Hill State. There's extensive landscaping over some good sites of the access track. On the site, there is an existing barn. This would be demolished and replaced with three dwellings. They would be attached two-storey properties with four bedrooms each and attached double garage with empty space. The houses would be built in brick and would have traditional pitch roofs with plain tiles. The garages would be finished in timber building. There'd be three-part measures reached out to including electric charging stations within the city park. New landscaping will be introduced to the site, including new trees and major vegetables. Consultation response has been received from the local authority, which is requesting further information. This is going to be prepared by the African strange consultant. Similarly, mine inquiries have been raised by the highways and ecology offices. We are in the process of this one. With regard to residential community, the proposed dwellings would be set towards southern end of the site and would not result in any loss of life or privacy for labour companies. The traffic noise resulting from pre-dwellings would not necessarily have a lower impact than actual vehicles that are used at that previously. The areas of construction could be controlled by the authorities. The proposal would redevelop this small-scale, meaningful site in a sustainable location in accordance with policy H P S that we're providing and policies between. The proposal would make a small contribution towards housing supply. The site is bound by existing development on three sides and there is a vulnerable barrier to the south, which would be planted with new landscape. The proposal would comply with the requirement to provide ten percent final loss to the tenant. If you have any questions you've got, the proposals will be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Mr Webb? Just here to answer some questions. I'm one of the owners of this site. My brothers. I'm a big farm for years. It's really an area we can't use anymore. We actually access the wide agricultural land from further towards Calvery. So we had to keep the gates locked. A lot of people just press past it from it since the base of development, so. It's there to be finished off, frankly, as it were.
So what we're looking at is a brownfield site, isn't it?
Exactly.
Yeah, it's been used, it's got a balm on it, it stops problems, so it is a brownfield. It's not fresh green open spaces, isn't it?
Yeah. And if it was, it's a storage machinery and a deep machine, so that would be nice.
Um, the committee got any questions, please? Can I wait? Cas, Cas, are you?
Um, yeah, just one question. Is there going to be self-announced buildings built in from the start? And also grey water recycling. We're very keen on that. New builds should have that built in and not have it added later. But it's a lot cheaper doing it, but it's good.
Yeah, so we're aware of the policy in the neighborhood plan for the grey water recycling, so each property, two water wells on each property, they are marked with plans. And they can be taken by conditions as well, so they are incorporated into the plan to comply with that policy. And they don't have some kind of...
So the balance is S or C. Would you consider that?
Yes.
In these times of rising costs. We can look at it. I don't know if the houses, if they were to go ahead and be built with the latest regulations. If they're in their entire house, they're quite efficient.
Yeah, Cas, are you there?
Um, so I'm just looking, I'm just looking at the Google satellite image of the site and it would appear that currently the field to back of the, the the proposed houses goes around in a loop, so that would be taking off the corner.
Of that agricultural field.
Am I right in looking that? So that's, that seems that. That's... Would that be correct?
It's not quite. It's not quite, but maybe it's a tiny corner of the field, a tiny corner.
But that's, that's coming along straight along here, isn't it? That's coming from that, straight along there, isn't it?
Yeah, it's probably just a bit up this, just a bit higher up.
I mean, it's quite open, isn't it?
It sits just open.
The proposal is to put in a hedge along the whole of that boundary to D R P.
Yeah, which is what I'm saying, but it is, is a agricultural community, so you can change this for that part of the field from agricultural to domestic dwelling.
This is a full planning application.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? With members' approval, what I'd like to do, because our speakers have been waiting since seven o'clock, we could bring forward that application, since we've just done the apologies and declarations of interest, we could then hear it.
Um, I'm glad I'm speaking, Chairman, as you mentioned.
Well, we are getting, we're getting to declarations of interest for us. So if you can't wait, we'll discuss it, please. Take your seat. So, is everyone... Yeah, thank you very much. Right, there's no other speaker, so let's just start meeting officially. First of all, apologies for absence. Paul?
Cas, again, in council.
Thank you very much, that's noted. Item two, declarations of interest, perceived declarations of any personal or prejudicial interest under consideration on this agenda in accordance with the MAC twenty twelve. Cas, touch free. I shall speak. Is that okay?
Yeah, it was actually, by now I sit on.
Thank you. As always, yeah. Nobody else? In that case, we will jump ahead to item six, planning applications. It's number four on the applications. Now, as you heard from Mr Webb, this is a brownfield site. It is also within the Buckingham settlement boundary, so it meets everything to do with the Buckingham neighborhood plan. We do encourage development on brownfield sites. It's direction of three detached dwellings, garages, car parking, drainage and landscaping. There are currently four objections on the planning portal about it. Two of those come from Bent Hill cottages, I'm counting two. One comes from Silk Way, the other side of the proposed new road, and the other one comes from Ollins Way, which is actually the household that is the other side of the school, so a long distance from this. Highways have given their okay, provided the entrance road is widened ten metres back from the A four one three Aylesbury Road. Ecology have raised the question about badgers. Is there any evidence of badger sets? Apart from that, there's very little more to say. Cas, read on it here.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm happy to go with the application. I think it's nice that, you know, local landowner has supervised us, you know, this space there that can be utilised. And I also appreciate that he came, he came tonight for us to ask any questions, because we say this a lot, but, you know, we only wish that we would integrate and, you know, come and have a chat with us. So, you know, I appreciate that a lot. But yeah, I'm happy to.
Maybe have a second. Thank you. Cas, are you? Buckingham society.
Thank you. Yes, we obviously looked at this and in principle, we certainly approve of the use of land in three dwellings. Given its edge of town status next to rural agricultural land, we would have liked the design perhaps to reflect more of a rural agricultural nature than what appears to be quite town centre. They resemble houses that are in Buckingham, that's for certain true. Perhaps not with the, some of the current buildings at Bent Hill. I'm thinking of the barn there. And that's our only real comment is we would have liked to have seen something with a little bit more affinity with the agricultural side of things.
Thank you. Cas, the tram?
The access road, I see it has a little blip, probably for a passing bay. But beyond that is the Pride of Park, wasn't it? Pride of Light. No, I think it is. Right, end of that question then, Chair.
So one more point that we noted, and I was reading the highways report. And although they're not concerned with batteries, they did point out that it's quite a long drag to cool the bins. I think it's over thirty metres and it should be twenty-five. And maybe that's resolved, but.
Thirty for the householders, twenty-five for the minimum.
Oh, twenty-five for the minimum. And they're not little things, yes, yeah.
You may have to allow to walk from one house.
True, true, true.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments on this? No, we've had to pose in second, so we'll put this to the vote. So all those in favour of approving this application?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, with the exception of, of him, the same. So thank you very much for taking the opportunity. Jenny Morton's, um, I hope. It's going to get through Buckinghamshire Council now. But generally, from what we've seen on all the comments, Buckinghamshire Council, there's a time to be agreeing with us. Good. Thank you very much for coming in. Good, let's get back to the agenda. Minutes, receive the minutes the Planning Committee held on the sixth of June. That's been settled, everyone. Everyone happy to pass this through the record? Thank you. Buckingham neighborhood plan, Vale of Ayles and plan, Buckingham Shaludo, or plan to receive that information, the answer to a follow-up question from Cas's touch free on Buckinghamshire local plan. It is appended, say, here, but, Robin, if you could just explain.
I've read it. What it basically says is that they're not in favour of having any over scrutiny of Buckinghamshire plan. And they think they can do it all through a broken infrastructure committee, which Buckinghamshire plan, I think, probably feel more than one meeting, the broken infrastructure committee, if you want to do scrutiny properly. Which means they haven't actually got any intention to solve. If you read the written question, just ask the written question. At the moment, yeah, people are talking about it, our chairs of committees, cabinet members, senior members and not members. The last time that Buckinghamshire councillors actually were consulted about Buckinghamshire plan twenty twenty. So they're really inclusive. So where do we go with that and how would you use that information? By beware would be the first thing I'd say and the stand by you there, because if we're not going to be consulted, if you're Buckinghamshire councillors, don't get it, say what the house has ever been saying. And they've got out a press release the other day saying how many houses, it's that and the other, but they can start as a topic by media, not talk to elected members. This is a real concern. Because up and down the cabinet, members who have experience, knowledge about their area, which should have any not select few of people that are beyond the kick of the controlling group, I think.
Yes, certainly. It is a worrying response. Thank you very much for asking basically that question, Robin. So as you say, where do we go from here? Anyone got, Cas, are you happy?
Well, I think where we go from here is to check on the accuracy of the, on the approach I'm taking. It strikes me that developing a local plan has got to be an inclusive operation that involves reasonably deep, wide consultation from a whole variety of people and lots of few press releases and a few fairly experienced surveying of users on the website. So one of the problems is that we asked the town clerk or the town planning officer or somebody to, to, to just check on the law of this and report back to us next meeting.
Thank you. Everyone care?
Yeah.
Thank you. Robin?
Just the, if the town clerk, the town clerk was there. The written response, the master agenda, it's got the detail of the question, the answer, which is responsive in the detail of it, which supports what I've said. And I think, I think you'll find that they pretty much make it through under their constitution, what they want to make, that we need to ask all questions.
I'm talking about national, yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I think that's where you're going. But we've got so many bitter memories, we're after the better than peace, sure that we're. It's sustained under a slap question, not, we don't miss the target.
Sheena, as one local planning officer, if you've got a, if you want this.
Um, making copies and notes to check. And I would say that there is probably a set formula in the same way as in how we make the plan, but clearly it's a consultation at different stages of development and which we need to go back on, which we will have to do. But I suspect there's a certain amount of discretion as to how that consultation exercise, as long as it is open to the public. And I don't know whether the law actually specifies whether members of the local council have to be consulted. I suspect it's much more oriented towards the public consultation in terms of national law, but I will check for the, for the, that sort of.
Thank you. It starts off. Anyone else have any comments on that? Item four, sorry. Oh, you, I'll do it.
I read it, that there was going to be an online server. And that's exclusive. Especially in the rural areas.
Yeah.
And we need to know that there's going to be facility for people to do on Facebook and take them back.
Right.
Um, connect us to follow up on that. Sorry, I thought we'd do it.
And I think probably Catherine was right, because obviously Buckinghamshire council is sort of one of the leads now on the national government's desire for online resources, et cetera, in relation to planning consultations. So, yeah, I would support that and I'm going to double check on that.
Thank you, Sheena. Thank you, Catherine. Item four two, Buckinghamshire council local plan to receive a request from the design code, that's appendix B. Sheena, again, would you like to expand on that?
I would.
I would simply say that obviously our neighborhood, working and neighborhood plan working group and particularly Roger Newell produced a draft design code, which I think we're going to hopefully push forward as part of the neighborhood plan. But yes, we'll probably be looking to put that forward as part of the consultation.
Thank you. But Karen, of course, Roger represents Buckingham society on the neighborhood plan working group, so happy to.
Yes, I mean, as I understand it, this code is only going to be covering certain elements of what you might call communal design throughout the county and not the local distinctive, so that the neighborhood plan will attempt to get pushed through properly.
Yeah, we asked that very question when we had the forum on the label of planning and they were told it would be a general plan, local areas could still have their own end book.
I think that is recognised.
For local government.
They're not going to have one size fits all.
Yeah.
So there are certain elements that might be included in such a street design. I'm sceptical about that too, but.
Thank you.
Um, that's a good problem. It might be worth. We've had lots of, we've had changes happening in the development since we last had one of those. The council have been struck, you know, the cabinet members, so I think it might be worth, you will remember, I think it probably was members when we will have knowledge of what we did, what we did about that and the way that worked and the fact that we asked, have it been our local design code? I mean, Buckingham design code. I think that's something might be worked to our favour in the sense that we weren't going to talk with someone who didn't know about it. And we've been talking to someone who's doing planning in the district, so. So we're not getting someone who doesn't know our areas. That might actually be a good thing. We might not, by the way, said the least will know what we're saying, which is, we might suggest that we receive therapy from him over how he believes the design code counts work and how we can react to this response to work. I think so that when we gave the right, and then he says, I wish we'd buy him the authority, so people say, oh, yes, I remember that. Then we might just, our first conversation might be joyous rather than not. And he might come back being my friend, we say, I recognise that, I support that, which is case for it. Aren't we there, aren't we?
Thank you, Robin. Item four three, Buckinghamshire council local plan. Now, this is when they do one plus, there's a call for sites. And the consultation, which is now beginning, they're looking for allocated sites in the period of twenty forty, can be as a new comment, the other sites, they're looking particularly at brownfield sites. As I say, that, that is now open from the thirteenth of June two weeks ago until the eleventh of September. Although sites submitted after this may still be considered.
This is quite alarming in the sense that third time they, they know that we're doing a revised Buckingham neighborhood plan, they just ask us for sites. I would imagine that our Buckingham neighborhood plan would offer them a substantial way of looking at site, rather than have George's still over there, Fred's over there and Bill's over there, because we know that we're going to have some work done to be able to do. We know that that in itself is going to offer challenges in itself, if the road is where it's supposed could normally be, which is along the route that established that brings loads of problems for residents along that route in the sense that it will challenge the green area between their properties. And, you know, and if the road is put in, maybe that offers solutions about discussing about websites. But this idea that we should offer site blindly, we're not a parish, we're a town. We have a neighborhood plan, we're not offering a, an auction at the end of the village. And it isn't appropriate. I think we should write that and say that we're happy to work with the neighborhood plan. Recognise that we've got a transport link changing in Buckingham, which is a major consideration. And we want to work as a constructive people on site allocations around the elements about the committee, because that's a whole discussion. We can, some of it makes the neighborhood plan by just offering sites on those commercially viable areas for them personally, against what is the most viable areas for the long-term viability of Buckingham. So, but this, this approach is not the right approach with Buckingham. They shouldn't have wrote to the town clerk and said, we're looking for you to work for us on sites and your Buckingham neighborhood plan, which you know you've got, and you've got here. This is true, it's like a, like Hamlet. We're not Hamlet, we're the largest area of town in Buckinghamshire. We're very large, aren't we? And, because I hate to think it's still in Buckinghamshire.
You know, it's going to look like a parish in the country.
Yeah, I know it's going to be a parish council, but I think they should communicate us differently to this. Because if we don't respond, right, what's stopping anybody saying, well, we recommend that site in Buckingham for planning and they're not in Buckingham? What's stopping them?
Well, they've already done that before, so.
I still, I still think it's a challenge to assume we've got this road likely to change, which they haven't actually agreed. They're still waiting to come back to stop it properly on it. Right, so I was having a challenge with that because I am.
Karen, Buckingham society, you're.
Well, I mean, I think anyone with any common sense would agree that a court of sites, the rule depends on transport. And in the whole, NPPS is predicated on sustainable development, which must revolve around transport. And this is in, well, it's a bit more of a cart before horse, really.
Alison?
Um, no, just probably say, I think Catherine's saying is that, yeah, it's communicated to the parish and to the council, communicated as well to owners of land, and they are free to put forward sites to Buckinghamshire council regardless of our neighborhood plan, et cetera. It's going to be forward to the, to the Buckinghamshire plan, which will also proceed in the neighborhood plan.
But just following from what you said, Karen, of course, what we saw happen was a call for employment, so we sent for West Scott and Silverstone.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So, John?
Hi. Um, it's worth, it's worth looking at the map to see what places they've already put out in the town. And one includes the, the area towards the end of Strackford Road before the roundabout, which is where some houses and include some green spaces in, in Page Hill there, as well as the Ford site, you know, there, I mean, the Ford garage site. Not unsurprisingly, the site where there's the doors merchants and the fireworks. Elevate site and another part of the, of the industrial estate of the Dindry Road as well. So a variety of spaces. Oh, the car park. Yeah, I think that's the car park. Actually, it's the university car park on Fourth Street, not the Ford garage site. So a variety of places, which I wonder whether they've picked out somewhere anyway. Would it be from our neighborhood plan?
No. For instance, the Tindoret Road site, it's the other half of Tindoret Road industrial site that's in the neighborhood plan and not that, that area. Yes, I have looked at the map. I'm not clear as to whether that and it's in fact sites that have already been put forward and by owners. I thought, I thought it had, yeah.
There's lines around it.
Yeah, I suspect that it is actually sites that have already been brought forward to the Buckinghamshire council as being available.
Thank you, Sheena. Um, we can move on. It's a sequel, so the agenda of twenty. Okay, so that will be at the end of this meeting. Um, action reports. Not that this is done, just a couple of things I've always raised. The first on page one is speak limit Tindoret Road. As you will recall, this was briefly announced on the twenty-first of June when the six-week consultation came to an end. Do we have anything in the office about that?
We have one, I mean, it wasn't on paper last week, so we'll probably have it in place this week.
As in move with the last to know, yeah.
They don't, the, the website does actually show as low as the book, so.
I'm fairly certain we'll change the year if you might have a couple of days to see. Which are doing diverting.
Robin?
I think I've already, or something I might not have. I think the decision was deferred on the thirteenth, mate. And it wasn't taken forward on the thirteenth, mate. My memory is that it went, it was deferred to an outside independent application as the actual finding. That's what I think it said. So it's not gone away, it hasn't been determined, it's deferred, but that means there's still work to go on, which is good in our sense. I think somebody else is having a look at it, not, not the people we met, whatever. So I think that's on the decision notice of council. Um, I will find that for now, I'll forward it to the office, I think, because it's in the public domain. That's where we are. So it hasn't gone away. And the idea that someone, what happened last time was people didn't read it correctly, like the chairman didn't, and people did, and it was announced, I think we've made careful, right? When are we getting out of that this one? Now we want to make sure that the announcement is both correct, precise, accurate, correct. For its accurate, correct, I think it was deferred, I haven't gone back to them because I presume that as a local member they might. Be good enough to solve the bay, um, when they finished it, and they haven't done that yet, so I have to go back and. And follow that up, but I think I've wanted it to be noticed, but the office sort of, um, um, thank you for your use.
That'd be really helpful, on the second page, over zero way, town plot work and discussions on section one oh six, because that's on. On January at the end of evening, but before that, Claire, we've got this bit about Buckinghamshire Council. Um, trying to persuade the developer to transfer land that which.
Yeah, that that basically calls very good summary of what was put on on the agenda for eleven.
I couldn't actually see it in my going through, so I definitely.
I think that that's basically what is.
Yeah, so we'll deal with that when we get there, okay, thanks, thank you, and the final thing I I have. To ask, um, here at the tree, we're waiting for information to give the spaces now.
Right, the first release has gone out, so that's been done, um, the plans are still out, the insurance company rep to the meeting, it's ongoing at the moment. Um, I'm indeed looking into whether we can get corporate ownership of the trusts, but they are. Some trees and less communication, they could trust on government level as well.
Great, thank you, that's very helpful, um, anything else on the action list and in the Black Res? Back to the end, the last slide, I can just just remind you, July the eighteenth, we will be having a presentation. Law comments about the triangle of the land between the eight four two one and the old Porton Road, so. That will be the general action, so the, the presentation.
Is it, so I can listen to it?
You can sit there, you can sit down.
Yeah, there's a rest, you can listen to that.
Thank you for that, everyone, once you're planning applications, um, as you know, we've already dealt with number four, so. Number one is fifty five Wall Street Castle, we're application for extensive renovation operations. Uh, very much for the whole house and installation, the flood area, it's a listed building, it's one of our finest buildings, as you know. Um, and I think, Karen, if you'd like to spot the ball rolling of that, how Buckingham society uses?
On fifty five Wall Street. Yes, and, well, but firstly, the information given by the applicant rather fills on with confidence. Because it is so comprehensive, and I don't know the internal layout of the building, I think one of our members had been in there. And and reported it in quite a state, particularly after the recent floods and so forth, and and the previous owners haven't done anything with it, obviously, for. A long time, but we are basically delighted with the fact that they're going to replace the blank windows with windows. And what they are proposing to do seems to me to be keeping with um the conservation area. Um, at the same time, making the house into a livable accommodation for twenty first century. Um, the flooding issues obviously are not going to go away, but they have made some provision for them and. We assume that they've been consulted with the flood defence, um. Environment Agency, and um, as long as historic building officer is satisfied, we would not object, we rather welcome this.
Yeah, I mean, I think you'll see in the photograph, Catherine posted on page fourteen, which shows the property used to. At that time of flooding, but eventually about the windows, just interestingly, that misinformation, just in a side, this window tax came in sixteen ninety six. If you have one ten windows, you've charged ten shillings for the extra window you had, and that wasn't actually repealed until eighteen fifty one. So, which accounts for so many of these houses, this area, still having these blank windows.
Been there a long time now, gosh.
Isn't it a bit mysterious? Um, no comment from Heritage yet, uh, Buckinghamshire Castle Heritage, or the four, uh, Castle try?
Yes, I was, uh, just like Buckinghamshire, very pleased with the application. Um, I still have a a sort of a warped sense of um, idea on the uh flooding. Um, because all that, as you stop it coming into their property in Mexico elsewhere, other sites in um Wall Street. Water comes in one end and it goes out the other side to dissipate it, where, of course, putting a wall there would just. They could go elsewhere, uh, and not, you know, yeah, it it takes up some of the flood. Um, area that it could overflow into, but, yeah. We've all got to uh build our castle, haven't we? So I'm, I I'm happy with it.
So what's the members' feelings generally? John?
Um, yeah, I think it's, obviously, I support this, I I again, I'd say, maybe, what Martin just said is that. We encourage them to grey water recycling and subject to this to building stages, so.
So we're happy there, so we're answering the affirmative, and Catherine wants to make a note, defenders on comments from Heritage, Buckingham.
Yes.
Thank you, um, that's two together, because the second part is a just building application. Um, number three is twenty three Dirfield Close, it's an old friend coming back, this is the extending. The property towards the back, which is slightly higher than the property's behind it, um, the new application shortened. The extension by only one meter, still the same height, there's two objections, um, both from neighbours. It's going to, yeah, the neighbor, thirty nine Kingfisher Road, the neighbour said it's still as much the same application as was refused. Um, last time around, it was refused on May the ninth after we, amongst others objected, and Catherine also dealt with the. Objection on behalf of someone who's not connected to internet, who said it would affect, affect the enjoyment of the garden that the people were, particularly this a little bit later. She was concerned it would be paved, and there was a possibility of a second story being added at the start, so they came back. Um, the actual loss of garden is, um, forty percent of it is going to go, so it will be eight meters long now, and. Neighbours behind on the first time round were concerned about the risk of flooding, if the water ran off the back of this property down to the. Members want to change their awareness since last time we objected.
No.
It seems.
Castle try?
Yes, it seems pretty much the same application, just saw them off a bit, and I think the same. You know, criteria, and I would oppose this.
Yeah, is that the theme of the meeting?
Agreed.
Yep.
Catherine is claiming in a way from society to with some substantial support.
Thank you, Castle try.
Yeah, so just on that point, um, I can't see any drainage, um. Uh, or guttering on the back. I'm assuming there could be, but you shouldn't ever assume, when you look at the site elevation, there is drainage and guttering on the front um bit. But nothing shown on the back, so, um, there were. And the proposed elevation shows the upper guttering going on to the roof, but um, which would have gone into a drain, I assume, but maybe not. So, you know, that is a valid point from uh, one of those objections, and, you know, that that should be clarified, but apart from that. It is essentially the same item, isn't it?
So there's, I think, Castle on.
I was just going to say, and that on the photographs, it does look like there is guttering, obviously, and and the damp part on the back. Property, but um, it's not been shown on on the drawings at all, as it has on the drawing of the front door.
Thank you.
See, that's what I was going to say, there's no one on the back.
You know, is that, that's true, you know, I'm assuming that we continue to get to that.
Yeah.
Thank you, um, items four we've done, item five, twenty one Strickland Road, this is the landed application. Um, regarding the gate, side gate, it could have been clarified. Did they have the right to put it there, it's on the outside, so they've come back that side and bothered by, but Catherine, you say, still some confusion over the.
Yes, um, the application before showed zigzags, which I took to be bifold patio doors. And querying the disparity with the rear renovation, which showed a window, and I was told that you wouldn't have bifold windows, and that's what they were. Now, the applicant has decided he wants bifold doors, but the elevation still shows a window. So, that's the officer she just tried by this, because when the decision sheet comes through, it will list the drawings and the revisions. And this is related to the last August revision, and therefore they would have to build it as they had it last August, if that's what went on their distinction. So I think we need to get clarity on that, I mean, it's not visible twenty forty years behind the wall. Um, and the shape of the extension doesn't change much, they just decided that perhaps it would be easier to get into the garden from the door.
Castle try?
Sorry, I, yes, I misheard you, I thought, uh, it was in the garage, they were having a.
I thought, I mean, what's a door?
And a window, it's just a bigger piece of.
There's a space between the house and the garage and the infinity.
Yeah.
It's a business store, you can't really see it from outside.
No, actually, thank you, um, this house is 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 a landmark house, isn't it, on the corner, so it stands out, as it's designed to do. Um, and the gate will actually come out through a pretty substantial door into the road, so again. It's going to be on view, and yet we have no illustrations or details about the design of the door that they're proposing. And I would suggest that if we, um, okay with this, we really should have quite a, a good quality door and a good quality design. In keeping with the fact that it is a lan- a landscape viewing point. A good point, that's something which is raised with the officers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just adding that, or the alteration to the wall, you know.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Is it cut out, does it have a lint across, or is it just cut straight down?
So it's again something we can ask more planners.
Or, you know.
If, if they come back and cross satisfaction, we've got, we've got no problem with that.
So opposed, but be minded to change your mind if you've got satisfactory drawings?
That's what we, yeah, Sam's what we, pragmatic solution. We work.
Pragmatic or opposed.
Thank you, we'll be that, Catherine knows what you do, um, right, item six, this is going to be the, uh. It takes some time tonight, this is Landoff Market Hill, West Street. Um, I may, I'm just going to read out some, I've put together everything that. Was raised, they're excellent and very, very long. All, and we also discussed something, so the previous application for this site was seventeen dwellings in twenty nineteen. Which Buckingham Town Council proposed that we draw, it's a windfall site for ten or less dwellings, which Buckingham Labour of Plan supports. While acknowledging that Buckingham Labour of Plan, BAP two, and the National Planning Policy Framework. The Blenheim Design and Management DNA Statement believes it's still dealing with Elsbury District Councils throughout the whole statement. It also disregards the N P policy E E two, which reserves this site for mixed residential and commercial development. The N P policy D H E six, provision of good quality private outdoor space for residents to enjoy. And N P P F paragraph sixty four, which expects schemes of ten or more dwellings on a site of half a hectare or more, which this is. To provide ten percent affordable housing, we have checked, that is still relevant. Uh, that was raised, in fact, under the twenty nineteen application. There's a number of issues raised by the local planning authority, the local lead flood authorities, that there's insufficient subs information. You'll see from Catherine's report, site is prone to surface water run off into the shopping areas. Now Buckinghamshire Council Archaeology wants a full investigation before development can begin, bringing an historic part of the town dating back to the Doomsday Book. It's also in the Buckingham Conservation Area, they did note there was, there was a report in twenty nineteen, which they said wasn't complete enough. They also acknowledge we've gone a long way since twenty nineteen. Buckingham Council Heritage is even more damning, Fiona Webb reports the proposal is not good enough to approve and to meet the statutory test. Preserve and advance the designated heritage assets meet the government's agenda of high quality, beautiful, sustainable buildings and places. Scheme is considered rather suburban in its form, overall it's bland and does not have an organic feel, this largely underwhelming. Max design imagination. Buckinghamshire Waste and Recycling said only the twenty six ton vehicle tracking analysis, they will pin storage and collection point information. Because it's on slopes, no further than fifteen metres push pull for crews and twenty five metres for residents. Ten dwellings will require twenty bins and food waste bins. Buckinghamshire Council Sustainability wants a further ecology statement, including biodiversity net gain, before they will consider the application. Other matters which Catherine raised, the displaced parking, the nineteen vehicles currently paying to park on the site. West, Weston Avenue Car Park cannot support more, and Summer House Hill is private with parking facilities. Access to the five common used dwellings which have parking rights. Retention of the right of way from Summer House Hill through the site to West Street, which the applicant has acknowledged, but doesn't mention in any of the design statements. The other thing Catherine points out is the white variations across the site, and finally, section one oh six agreements mention only education. Should we now be pushing a health provision? Sorry to be so long, but that's, that's been encapsulated in everything that Catherine has put together, thank you for that, Catherine. John?
Yeah, all of that. Of course, um, I I would use by where they think Paul's going to come and go for, um, and it just feels a rule, I mean, that one.
Yeah. Yeah, Castle try?
Just picking up on the transport, uh. We can confirm that they're going to go from, well, nineteen earmarked designated based on that there is that to forty, is that right?
Uh, that there is room for forty, but quite a lot of people are themselves planned. The nineteen pay for days are now labeled for the users, five for the C A B.
Yes, when it's been developed, how many?
Um, there will be, if there's ten houses, I think fifteen days altogether.
Okay, so finally left the product plan.
Uh, plus we've displaced the nineteen plus of the estate agents.
Well, yes, yes, no, where I was coming from was if it's going to increase, um. That is a no entry at that point, they shouldn't be going from well street into that area.
They go from West Street, getting through number six.
Sorry, uh, when, okay, they go through the, the uh, the o- the arch, do they?
No, 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 that will be dangerous, further along West Street, before you get to the old advertiser building, there's quite a wide entry. That has a big yard at the back where the old top edge building used to be.
Yeah.
It's not that wide an entry. And then they can go across to the car park.
I see, I, I know, yeah, yeah.
It's not, it's, it's, it's a tight turn, that is, and yeah.
Particularly as, uh, you see, I've actually looked at all the planning applications for the barn conversion and. Trap conversion and the part that they have stated required with the, those applications, and it doesn't leave room for any of them. Anything to turn, you know, delivery area or.
So, if I might continue on that, why isn't that entrance then from West Street, um, in the red light, is it not theirs?
No.
No.
Okay.
So it doesn't mention it, but that is what the estate agents classed as a watchman living. But no, they don't come from the archway, it really is not.
But if that isn't theirs, and they develop, they could develop it with.
If they, if they're going to say that the people will come from the post office direction and go in and then come out and go to West Street. Um, they've got to think about bin day, when they will be turning around and replace bins in that.
Exactly, exactly, yes, yes, but, yeah, thank you, Karen.
And I think, yes, echo everything that was covered in detail, look, one thing wasn't mentioned, that was the, the new. One thing wasn't mentioned perhaps was the, the new authorisation, they will need authorisation to navigate water. Those sewage disposal that they haven't got. And at the end of the day, you think, well, this is a brown for a site, it would be nice to see it in, in use. But, um, the amount of conditions that we're going to have to be required to make it usable. You think, maybe it just should be turned into recreational park.
The conservation area, and they says that it does a disservice to the conservation area, but this is not the solution.
No, and I, we totally agree with everything that was said. She says it very succinctly and, and very articulate. And one other basic point is that a new chair.
Again, that's Buckingham Design.
I'm saying, no.
Thank you. No, we have that. So what's the feeling of the meeting?
I oppose.
Can we, I think we've had a vote on this one. So proposing by Castle Harvey, seconded by Castle Rapp, he shot his hand up first. All those, um, favor we could, we propose this application.
I'm calling.
Uh, I'm calling, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're just part of the major application. So that's, um, that's all in favor, abstentions, council, up to break no one against. Thank you.
No, yeah, no, you can tell him that. I mean, you know, we take you right to the level of commitment. But, but don't change it.
It's important to manage the amount of money.
Yeah. We're following, we're following the.
And someone will get an invitation to speak at a meeting.
Yes.
I'm, I'm speaking at one moment.
Oh.
Yes, but that's not how we're going to pay you.
I know. I think the last time we went to speak to the committee was actually the May's Mall, was the Mirena infection.
Yes, I'm.
Right, let's carry on. Um, we're following next to be taken together is Lloyd's Bank, who just, a month ago, we proved the replacement of the item was a new one. They haven't. It's already approved, they have done about it, they now want to remove that on. Not, not replace it. What is concerning is that in the application, um, no mention is made of the September closure. And the agent in, says that the bank, that any, any customers who need cash can use the, the bank. That's going to be a place in September. Taking any notice whatsoever. The bank will, they're opening services to customers. So anyway, um, I think it's something we can really fight, it's, it's going to happen, it's inevitable. Or no, no objection. Thank you. Um, number nine is, we're off the line, I think, to the road. And coming back, we've seen Catherine's pictures. The household has made some effort to improve things after enforcement told him he had to take, um, reduce the height of the wall. So to put in a new application, um, which includes porch side screens and a much, much lower wall. Now, the main problem continues to be that the wall is after keeping the, the whole rest of that side down to the road. Which is, uh, slow, is, is picket fencing all the way up. So, Castle Harvey.
Uh, I object on street scene basis. It's just inappropriate, destroys the line of housing. It's awful. Even the reduced version.
That's on street scene, yeah. Any comments on it? Karen.
Well, we think it is better, as undoubtedly a, a, a better solution, but it is still just really irritating, actually. It's such an application should be put in because it is destroying the street scene. The thing ought to come down reinstated. Um. It feels that it's a, a lost cause in a way, and there must be something better that they could do to make it tie in with street scene. At the moment, this appearance is, is not doing it. Until further efforts are made to make it tie in with its neighbours, it should be opposed.
Yeah, one, one thing that you can see from Catherine's photos is a different version, is a massive drop from the bottom of the stairs onto the pavement. So quite hard they're going to get around that because that is the, the edge of their property. Um, there's a lot of work to do on this, but Castle Harvey has proposed we continue, we object again. Seconded for that. Thank you, Castle Davis. Last, like, the speed comments? So we just go on the grounds that we've mentioned it's sort of appropriate, spoils the streets. Right. There're also porches full width and, well, naturally this is taken yesterday morning. Porches full width there, but it's shown with a slant at one end on the plan, so that's not right. And it's, thank you.
Probably going to vote on that.
Vote.
Yeah.
Definitely. All in favor that we, that was, it's not called naturally, it has enforcement on the rest. Thank you. Um, our final planning application tonight is twenty six, Malard Drive. This is the only one tonight that doesn't have a, hasn't had a yellow notice posted.
You're not, uh, you know. They've got draft notices on the document list.
Well.
All they haven't got is a date of posting.
Okay.
So only the first three have got yellow notice.
Right, actually got them up. Um, this is, again, we've already approved an earlier change to this, that there's no building line in that part of Malard Drive. Our summer setbacks on forward. Um, we'd interject to the previous extension, this is the modification on that extension. Is everyone happy in that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, item seven, planning decisions. At once, at least that we didn't object to, it's been approved. And the only one that, uh, still outstanding is the Women's Veterinary Service, fourteen fifteen High Street, who's got four air conditioning units on the fascia. Um, they've withdrawn the application to the moment while they're just sorting out how they need to apply for it. So that will come back as, as a genetic Catherine says.
Well, of course, I mean, Elsbury sat on it a few weeks before the advisory on it. And six days later it was withdrawn. So they could have noticed that the wrong application.
Thank you. Um, item eight, Buckinghamshire Council matters, received news of Buckinghamshire Council, new documents, other information from Buckinghamshire Council members present. I think you've seen a lot of the documents, so running the orders in your court.
I'll just be brief. Um, the make you aware that, that we spoke about, um, getting the Buckinghamshire Fire Party change there. Um. The way they operate to include environmental risks, alternative risk threats, that managed to achieve that at the third meeting of the Fire Party, it's a new chairman, well, ready. And, um, managed to get that agreed. The masses owed to you way, um, I'll talk about that when it's on the jet limits, it's let down. I am following up the April two one, happy day, so that briefly. But when I've got more information on that, my main proof is about it actually, that it is because at this point, there's going to be a document due, which is a a crazy of works. And my, my concern is that that's not, that that needs to come to the town council. It's town council's largest accommodation of people on the route. And the officer, and I spoke briefly today, and he's hoping to come back to me before cabinet. Come back before cabinet, I'm going to cabinet, um, because I'm not having this council, um, and not discussed and ignored, and they have to give you information. Well, that would be sad. Twelve, um, dentists in the armpit.
So, yeah, anyone have any questions for our charmer? Thank you very much for that performance, stick to the plan. Um, the closing term call has been deferred to the next meeting because we're quite busy tonight. Buckinghamshire Council Committee Meetings, item nine. No Buckingham applications on June first and more than yet, strategic sites on June the ninth. Um.
The general consent, the rise of that yet, sometimes.
Okay, thank you. Um, item ten, updates from representatives on our site orders to receive any verbal updates from councils, anyone?
I'm not a council legislator. Um, I noticed recently there was an S one oh six thing on, on O Z away. Um, and actually we queried at Maidsmore, the S one oh six on Malard Drive as to why the parish council wasn't being discussed on what it could put forward for sports and leisure. And a reply has been received, which says that Maidsmore will have first refusal, but then, um, if the council deem that, uh, to be correct, we can have what we ask for, but if not, they will, um, extend the largesse of S one oh six money to, uh, projects within the Buckingham settlement. And Buckingham and Maidsmore are now part of the same settlement. And they seem to slip this in, um, in a very, um, underhand manner. Uh, nobody, as far as I know, has been consulted in Maidsmore, and it's whether we are the Buckingham settlement or not. How has this come about?
Thank you. Castle, Castle, stop.
My memory of it, how it came about, goes back to the Maidsmore Road one application. Inspector in Maidsmore Road one found that there was no delineation um, or difference between Maidsmore and Buckingham. And the inspector recognised that that development, when we Maidsmore Road one got approved and Maids contingent road didn't. If you read the inspector's report, he made the decision that there was no si- delimited line between Buckingham and Maidsmore, and it dates back to be proved at the third application.
Does it really?
And that's because my memory's not good. And you go back and check it, it will say that. If you go back and get the documents out, if you were dealing with it at the time, if you dropped them, it'll be the inspector's report, um, and the findings in Maidsmore Road one.
It's a little sentence in there, was there?
I didn't. That's where they drew a draw and hit wrong. It was approved by an inspector who was one of these. So that's carried forth with the legal, remember we were all objected.
Yes, and once we've been grouped together, we're still going to go.
Yeah, so that's where the only thing of it, not a pleasant thing to say, but it happens to be right, but I'm sorry about that, but that's my memory of that, and it'll be correct.
Parish boundary didn't change.
No, no, because the inspector didn't, didn't see any, when he agreed that, like, the question was draft or stuff. He didn't recognise that there was a substantive Buckingham Maidsmore. That's when we invited, was at that application, that's what we stood up against all along, after that application agreed. Even though there wasn't the second bill.
Right.
You, you know, that can, how I will see that on correct, long already.
Thank you very much. Um, Anthony, I know there is no more parish consulting items tonight.
But there is, uh, there's the AGM and obviously the general meeting next week. And I'll prepare a short report and, um, posted in as we agreed I would do, so that all councillors can read it. Sites and vice. And, uh, I'll slip away on holiday then and, um, and make sure I know any of it when it hits.
We can put that on the agenda for the next week.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much. Be good. Um, no, no others. Let's move on to item eleven, O Z away, which Catherine is leading on. Is your correspondence first with Philip Pajabas?
Um, yeah. The officer expressed eyes that we wanted have been booked for the section one oh six, because this is not a common thing. And I thought, I don't know where you came from, but we've been banging about this past five years about having something. And we have since then seen, as you see from the actualist, that that is a pretty well settled in concrete, there was not going to be any changes. Um. I know there was a suggestion that some of us thought maybe we'd go to Edmonton Valley. And I know that Mr. Houston was unhappy about this. Um. But, but, I mean, they say things like, well, there's going to be some playgrounds. And I tell you what, we've put some extra benches around so that the elderly can sit on them and talk to each other. In the rain? You know, there is no community, there is no community hub for Tintor Road. That's eight hundred houses on Divaling, the sides of the road, that has got no community facilities whatsoever, and nowhere indoors to meet. Um, they sell something, that's another one. And, I mean, the kids, they're not going to walk into school, there, there are not going to be any communities to ease us to all, because everybody's going to have, drive everywhere. Um, it doesn't seem to, even though there's a thing we can do about it. If they just don't have blinders, draw these things in that year down there without any kind of local input, how are they ever going to know what we need?
Thank you, Robyn.
Yeah. Just saying that I besides that I met the developers at the, I also met with the council and said that I wanted town council to be party to section one oh six. This one is quite unusual because if you read the votes of our meeting, the developer would determine beyond belief not to allow the town council to be involved in it. And, and was there for the management group from the on, the town park correspondent, and, and they were persistent, so they were the long, it's janky, you know, I was at Buckinghamshire Council. I have come back to, I think I've asked you, sort of raised my concerns about the fact that this town council wouldn't even solve it about the content of section one oh six, which boys would agree. And I think that is something that cannot be presented because um, those include the things that we wrote about. So they, they would say that they took basically consideration, said correspondence with other people. What we haven't got here is a proper linear conversation. And what I now ascertain is the way they seem to rewrite the sexual ethics agreement is and I don't think it's home place in other places, but if they were the council or take a land on in the Davidson district, they would provide themselves into the section one oh six agreement. If we don't take the land off, there will be a management company. So what they're writing into this agreement is management company is first default. And it's up to the developer to decide whether they want to pass it over to us. I don't think that's right. I think that is, um, that prevents parishes, prevents town. And they're really making it really difficult for us to do. I would suggest that we need to seek some advice and look at other, because I believe other councils are doing it differently. Uh, but I think we need to find out that if the case, then we need to go back to them and say, why is it that Buckinghamshire Council is operating in favour of the developer's choice and not the local people having opportunity? Because it can be broken to effect nothing. If they write into the development saying, uh, if the town council don't take it on or the parish don't take it on, it'll go to a management company. At least that means they've got to talk to us in the third place, isn't it? Because it's got this, this is the, they don't talk to us in third place is. And O G way was, because when we were dealing with O G way, I believe the council were objected to it. Um, it went to, it really go to the normal committee, it went to the Strategic Development Control Committee. Council Patrick Green proposed it was agreed. Um, and it gets carried on as it, so we didn't even get the local members discussing that application, even in that committee or by making referencing the committee saying, well, I think that we take that into consideration, that you look in, uh, if you can't object to increases from the art that, uh, town council views, so taking that, that didn't happen. So what we got is local member proposing it. No suggestion that that was a group in committee, because they can take that under what they, correctly, there's a word for it. Um, when they, you know, terms or whatever, so that could have been done there. So it's been a disaster from onset, we're going to live with it and. And the poor people who moved into there have got no amenity. And the idea, I didn't tell them when I met the officers that you can't actually use Emberton Way because it's got a government on it. So you can't include this contribution. So then where we go, I think, is I would propose, I said earlier, that we find out what other councils do. And then we go back at the next meeting, discuss that. And then when we discuss what other councils are doing, then we write back to them saying, well, if your partnership do this, your boss should do this, if Milton Kings do this, and half the share do this, why is it Buckinghamshire council isn't doing this? I think we need to be sure about that and then we can, then we can ask them to change the way that they're writing and agreeing section one oh six, so at least it gives the community an opportunity. Because in this instance, the developer is so determined, it's almost like the developer got the development and, and then shut the door to it here.
And they're not going to exactly put what's going to be used anywhere.
No, no. No, it's not too bad. We haven't had consultations.
They've eventually agreed to ask thirty five percent of the, before what happened, but since then it's very quiet.
Yes, their problems were very blocked. It's patronising, it's insulting. It's saying, we know best, we just do not.
So, Caroline, Fran and then Lisa, we can go on.
I was just going to point out the ignorance of geographical application to O Z Way in the education, which they say primary school education will be at Mates Morton and Buckingham. And clearly, half of the states is proposed to be in the Gorka parish. I mean, it seems to be totally irrational.
Equally, and they haven't worked out that Gorka's, London Energy Schools junior and the infant schools in secondary, which is quite a long walk.
Yeah, all of that just goes to prove yet again that lack of local knowledge and geographical position is, is to all our detriment.
So, yeah, thank you. I was, I was going to speak on, on the Mates Morton and Buckingham primary schools. Mates Morton is an infant school that goes up to the age of eight. So, and then is a feeder school for Buckingham primary. Buckingham secondary, I was at a meeting at last week. And I was told that they are currently having class sizes of thirty two children. And they have a waiting list, they have children that want places at Buckingham secondary. And there aren't enough places there for those children. So how is that going to get resolved? Just by building more classrooms or whatever isn't going to do it. It would have to be another form, it would have to be seven forms of entry rather than six that they currently have there. Saying that, there's also health provision, isn't, isn't in there. And, and I think we need to look at what's happened in Berkeley, where they've, not only they've built that, that new health care place. The new estate that they've built there, it's got a primary school on it and a hall, the Edgerton Hall in Berkeley. If it can be done there, why can't we have it done here?
The time I joined the council, A B D C had a policy of not providing community centres on your space. Lisa, you're next.
Thank you. Yeah, what I've been saying about, we don't want that to be a question that, you know, we're not included from the start with not taking on green spaces and the management committee being just automatically put in. I think that is already a question because we saw that in mode and Lays Hill of management committee. So, you know, we do need to, to get that conversation that way now. And I struggle to understand the logic of the council feeling proposing that I accept O Z Way with him knowing his feelings about it from the outset. And if he doesn't know what's in our plan, then, you know, he, he's not as plugged in as he made out to his constituents when he was going up for election. You know, the whole fact to be represented by local people and having a local person go against our wishes and then not included in section one oh six talks. When again, he must know that that's, that's been our wish for a long time. So, yeah.
I mean, they're going to have their own wardmen, but that's the world.
I think we are against a struggle, a lot of can demonstrate what I said earlier with the way that they're talking to each other. Cut the, now cut the, I think the situation with the education thing, and it might explain it, is that Buckingham primary is an LEA school. Buckingham secondary school is an LEA school. The Gorka school is an academy.
Roundwood.
In Roundwood Academy. And they've actually put the money to local forest schools. So this is, you'll find that the last one you went to, any, the Latin school got some money out of Lays Hill. Because when they, they weren't an academy and that was a period. Now they're an academy, I think it's about, one of these nice things about academy schools. And, and of course, when it comes to Lays Hill School, it's the first school which was ever built in Buckinghamshire, but it wasn't built by Buckinghamshire council. It was built by the, by the developer and, and, and they didn't have a say in it because it was an academy school. This is one a lot on this academic education thing. You are right, but you think they make a contribution to someone, but as I've announced it, Tindricks, where the older children go and I think juniors or whichever way around it is. But I'm very concerned with, as Catherine already says, about the thirty two in a class at Buckingham secondary school. I think that the fact that, that as a local member, I'm not actually informed that they've brought up to thirty two class.
I just told you.
But I know that, but it shouldn't be, shouldn't be said like that. And I should be writing to somebody tonight, asking for a reason for that. Because Buckingham secondary school is our secondary school. The ground school is a regional education facility now, because it takes people from such a broad area and it's counted as a local school. But it, 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 you know, it's actively, it's so wide now. And those local children go there, the majority of the children go, there won't be local children, that's just the result of the school. So we do need to see what happens. So maybe we should, on a side of this, invite commentary for Buckingham secondary school on the local land, because you will know that there is educational land on the London Road. When you pass the university, that triangle of field is educational land. On the other side of the road, that is still educational land, because Catherine was witness to a discussion once, I had it, the older ones were here. When I saved it from being transferred to the academy, it was an interesting discussion. I'll try and go into what was said. There is, and I think we need to get that transferred into the, to discuss about what they're going to do. This is the secondary school, we've added the new sixth form. Sixth form college, and it would make space for the school, maybe that's what they want to do. But if we know that's what they want to do in our local plan, we can actually assist them, can't we? In actually planning for it, unless we had enough growth that we had a whole new secondary school outside of town. But that's another thing, but at the moment, I think we do need to just.
Thank you very much. We have rather drifted into the next item anyway.
Sorry, Shane, I put my hand up. I think Fran's absolutely right, we need to highlight the issue of health again, it's not included. Although I'll be sure, we've only got, we've got a protected and not full document here, it's been said.
Yeah, that's the next item.
Justice, very sensitive and so on. And frankly, I think the nerves are off. I'm fed up, utterly fed up with the shy council ignoring the local knowledge. I've had enough of being schmoozy and nice about it, saying, oh, please, please, please let us involve. I mean, the gloves off and say, it's shocking that they're not involved. I can be shocked.
And just a quick, quick point. Roundwood School is a community school, which it says here, Community School in England Wales is type of state funded school, in which the local education authority employs the school staff, which is responsible for the school's admissions and owns the school's estate. So it would appear that, that Roundwood School is an LEA school.
Thank you. Let's move on because we've still got the closed session tonight. Second part of those areas to receive and discuss summary of returns by the club, we have sort of drifted into it. And as John actually just said, you know, they're treating us like children, anything to do with money has been redacted. Catherine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, far as I'm concerned, this is honestly a pointless, enough that to say, this is just a problem. Is there any pointers in wasting time on this issue?
Probably not.
So that's the number I've got for four, my next say, lots of battle, wasting time.
All right. I don't think that a press release and saying what they've written doesn't even make sense. They don't even know what it was and by the local parish. The other details, it's just a vague back yourself and it just points to officers not having a clue about the local area. And it's, it's about time that local shy councillors and town councillors were closely involved in section one oh six. And agreed to the community future of their parts of Buckingham. We need to be strong on this and put out an assertive press release by you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And Robin, can you be quick?
Because I don't think we should, I think as for these officers, if the council isn't running by, run by councillors. I don't think when the decisions taken in cabinet make decisions, if decisions are supported by a cabinet member, cabinet member makes decisions to have that decision, officers make decisions. You may end up with officers' decisions, because that's the way the cabinet has chosen to run the council. The officers don't make decisions without consent of the cabinet member. So it's a, it's a political decision that that is the case. You may be right, the way you're saying it, John, but it isn't. We should be careful how we, how we grade it around officers. They, they only take direction from political leader.
One is not concerned in a strong, you know, you're really doing it.
Your employees, the things. So councillor Harding has proposed that we do a press release, so that's secondly. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Who will draft it?
Catherine. I trust Catherine to write something.
Okay, and I'll put a quote in. Thank you very much, everyone, for that. So I would say at this point, then we, we won't proceed further with the.
I think one, one thing, I think you need to talk to the highways. Because the, if we don't talk to them, they put in, what they put in for section one oh six is the highway is a nominal crossing on the Gorka Road. Where the children are going to all graduate from one end of the state to the other, across the Gorka Road. They're going to, I must get up in the morning and go to Central, I'll take a three hundred yard detour to go to the school and pay the longest bus fare. Now they're going to go down through the industrial state and across by Aldi and then to the railway hall. Or, when they said in the meeting I met them, well, they can take, they, at the planning meeting, they didn't know that, that it was a footpath around the outskirts of the estate. They thought it was a right of way, so they didn't know there was a footpath to Lays Hill. They thought we could walk around the back of their basement. I think if we do need to carry on discussions about the highway thing, because quite frankly, what they've agreed goes in. With the new development, which likely to, she's on the cards, it's exposed area, that pathway down by Liddon is going to be the way the children go. And I can say this for a lot, and they're all going to cross that road at that one point. The school, no child is going to go.
No child, that's the long way.
No child goes the long way around, do they? I mean.
That's, that's, we need to bring up at the next meeting, give it more than ever. But yeah, in the meantime, let's get this press release out. Thank you for that, everyone. Item twelve, enforcement, any new breaches, new wishes to report? Well, thank you. Application for a priest has been deferred to the next meeting. Matters to report, any redundant signage, purpose, damage. I did raise some about these yellow construction signs. They've got what I can go rise up after five years, they've got manorages complete, it's all the way along the bypass from the naturally road. Catherine's actually chasing people up to do this.
Yeah, the, the, their technicians, certainly can't do what happened, they're the AAs and he's giving you the contact with the AAs.
That's why they're, yeah, that.
Well, and they paid for it as well. Get them up.
I think that means you can't, anybody will be.
Is it Angling or Anglers Association or something else?
Chances, chances items for information, I have an update at next meeting, it's Sunday twenty fifth of July, twenty seven P M.
Twenty twenty?